Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the April 11th, 2019 Planning Board Public Meeting. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Roll call please.
(inaudible)
Yes.
(inaudible)
Present.
(inaudible)
Here.
(inaudible)
Here.
(inaudible)
Here.
(inaudible)
Here.
(inaudible)
Here. Okay, first up, we have considerations of meeting minutes. First up is the meeting minutes of February 7th, 2019.
Eligible members, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Laponty, Mr. Peason, yourself, Mr. Julian, Mr. Scoboe, Mr. Hestag.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Okay. Any comments from today's? Roll call please.
(inaudible)
Yes.
(inaudible)
Yes.
(inaudible)
Yes.
(inaudible)
Yes. Next, we have meeting minutes of March 28th, 2019.
Eligible members, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Laponty, Mr. Julian, Mr. Weinstein, Mr. Scoboe, Mr. Hestag, Mr. Deb.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second, any comments? Seeing none, roll call please.
(inaudible)
Yes.
(inaudible)
Yes.
(inaudible)
Yes.
(inaudible)
Yes. Okay, we do not have any considerations this evening nor playing board business, so we'll open comments from the public on items not on this evening's agenda. If anyone has any, can come up to the mic. Sounds like everyone's here for this evening's agenda, so we will move on to this evening's applications and counsel. I'll let you take it.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Mike O'Rodnick of Savo Shaw Gillespie O'Rodnick &amp; Fisher. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Amwell Terrace LLC. This is our application seeking preliminary and final site plan approval with bulk variances and waivers necessary to construct a multifamily residential development consisting of 126 dwelling units and nine buildings, which would include 36 affordable units. The buildings range in size from 12 to 18 units per building and include garages on the first floor level for tenant parking. This application also proposes recreational facilities and amenities ancillary to the residential, including a leasing and management office, which is proposed in Building One near the entrance. This project has been prepared in accordance with Hillsborough Township Ordinance 2017-20 as adopted on December 12th, 2017. It's also consistent with the settlement with the township regarding township's co-requirements as imposed by the Fair Housing Act and implemented through the Superior Court as memorialized by agreement dated November 20, 2018. The subject property is located in the Gateway A Zone with overlay and is 9.378 acres in size. This application proposes that all three lots be consolidated into one lot. In accordance with the ordinance, a 20-foot wide buffer is proposed along the south and east property lines where the residential zones or existing residential uses exist. Sidewalks are proposed together with other improvements such as a playground area, pathways, benches, picnic tables for use of the residents. By way of variances, township professionals have identified a variance, a C-bulk variance, for a second curb cut onto Amwell Road for ingress and egress where only one curb cut is permitted by Section 188, 113, 1F, 1C, and for maximum width, the curb cut for the second driveway where 24 feet is required and 33 feet with a non-landscape to median is proposed. Those are the only variances in this application. There is also a waiver. The applicant is requesting a waiver for parking buffers under Section 188, 68C as a 30-foot wide buffer is required for adjoining streets and property lines, and 6.71 feet is proposed on the western property line near the existing Autozone for a few parking spaces. In compliance with the Municipal Land Use Law of the state of New Jersey, notice has been properly served via certified mail, and public notice has been recently published in the Beacon. Affidavits are on file with the board and the board secretary in advance of tonight's hearing. Tonight with me, I have four primary witnesses. We have Mike Ford, our professional engineer. We have Jay Troutman, our traffic engineer, Mark Burkowski, our architect, and Art Bernard, who's our professional planner. I have Henry Stein here on behalf of the applicant, if you want to ask him any questions. We also have Tom Offenord, who's our environmental consultant from Eco Sciences. And again, we have these witnesses available to answer any technical question if the need so arises. Unless there are any legal questions, I would ask the board to swear in Mr. Ford to provide the site plan and engineering testimony.
Michael Ford, F-O-R-D, with Van Cleef Engineering Associates, 32 Brower Lane, Hillsborough, New Jersey. Licensed engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey, and I've appeared before this board on numerous occasions.
Including last week, so nothing's changed since last week?
No, it hasn't.
Then we will accept your petition.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right. I think we've already marked exhibits. Do we need to put that on the record?
Yeah, let's just make a record. So we've submitted two packets. The first packet, if you would describe it, it's the engineered drawings. Could you just go through the pages one by one?
Okay. There's a total of eight pages, and these are all reduced 11-by-17 copies identical to the electronic copies that I have on the screen. Page one is an existing condition map. Page two is the proposed project color rendering as was submitted with the application. Page three is another colored rendering of the application with some subtle changes that we've already made.
Can you flip to?
Sure, I can flip to them here.
As you go through for the cameras, thank you.
Exhibit two, I just went to. Exhibit three is, again, a colored rendering of the entire project with some changes that I'll describe during my testimony that we've made since receiving the staff reviews. Page four, five, and six are with regards to tree mitigation presentation that I'll get to in a minute. Page seven is an illustration of a brick paver-type walkway that we intend to utilize in the project, and I'll describe where that'll be proposed during my testimony. And the last engineered, or engineering packet exhibit is page eight, which is the site sign. Now, if I could go back to page one and walk through these. Page one is an existing condition map. The entire tract is highlighted in yellow. There are actually three lots that'll be consolidated into one lot as part of this application totaling 9.37 acres. There are structures on the three lots fronting Amwell Road, which is on the right side of the page. They're dwellings. They would all be removed as part of this application. And on the most easterly lot, Lot Six, there's also a barn structure at the rear of the existing dwelling, which would be removed as part of this application as well. In addition to frontage on Amwell Road, which is at the north end of the property, at the south end of the property, and I'm highlighting it now, the lots have frontage on Stymet's Road as well. And when I get to the proposed conditions, there's no access proposed to Stymet's. All the access for the project will be off of Amwell Road. With regards to orientation, to the east is an existing residence, and then beyond that are additional residences that front on Stymet's Road. And then to the west of the project is the Autozone commercial property. And then further west is the professional buildings, which are accessed from a traffic signal at the intersection of Ponty Woods and Amwell Road. Let me go to the, with regards to site constraints, beyond the existing physical improvements, there has been a wetland delineation done for the property. The DEP issued a freshwater wetland LOI in 2014, and that area of wetlands is at the rear of the property or the southeast corner of the property. And there is an existing drainage feature at that location that drains toward the rear of the property and to properties off-site and eventually to the Royces Brook. There's also a state open water that was identified as part of that freshwater wetland letter of interpretation. The state open water carries with it a riparian zone of 150 feet, and we've identified those critical areas on the existing condition map. And as part of the development of the project, we've endeavored to minimize our impacts to those areas to the greatest extent possible. And I'll go over in a minute the minor intrusions. That is, there's a small portion of the wetlands that'll be disturbed as part of a utility crossing for sanitary sewer access and service for the property. And then there is also some transition areas related to the wetlands that we intend to average. That is, make the buffer slightly smaller in some areas and larger in other areas. And there actually is already a pending application with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, who has jurisdiction over those regulated areas for permission to do those minor impacts to those existing wetland features. Okay, now I'll go to the, maybe perhaps before I go to the next slide or exhibit, directly to the north of the site, on the other side of Amwell Road is the existing Bridgeway and Avalon properties. There are two existing driveways at that existing facility. The most westerly driveway is where we are proposing our site access driveway. And if you're familiar with this section of Amwell Road, if you're headed westbound, there's one through lane headed toward Route 206. And then in the opposite, and then there's actually a left turn lane that is created right at the signalized intersection at Ponty Woods. And then if you're headed eastbound on Route 206, or I'm sorry, on Amwell Road from 206, Route 206, there are two lanes headed eastbound on Amwell Road, which is a county road. And then at the intersection of Ponty Woods, those two lanes merge into one across the frontage of this property in a somewhat, I'll say, not well-controlled manner. In fact, I've experienced myself even where people, because the cartway is so wide at this location, people would ignore the merger and actually drive on what becomes a shoulder to try to continue that merging operation. And I'll tell you, as part of our presentation for the proposal for this project with regards to Amwell Road, I think one of the enhancements that will result of this project is, and we've actually had two meetings and several conversations with the county staff regarding this matter, but what we'll be proposing is creating a designated left turn lane at our proposed driveway, which would also include with it a designated left turn lane into our neighbors to the north, that is, the Bridgeway site. And then, as a result of that, this wide cartway will be more controlled, and there'll still continue to be a one-through lane passing the site, but the merger that right now is quite long east of Ponty Woods intersection will become more controlled and shorter, and the merger will take place closer to the Ponty Woods intersection. While talking about the county route, we've made application to Somerset County. We've received some comments regarding the details of our application. They still fully support the proposed restriping and the designated left turn lanes, and they've already put us on notice that as part of some capital improvement projects that are planned, this section of Amwell Road is scheduled to be repaved, milled and resurfaced coming this spring or early summer. And part of their March 11th review report to us, that is, the applicant, was a request that rather than us restripe this area, they're seeking the applicant to be willing to provide a contribution to support the restriping of the pavement as part of that pavement resurfacing project the county will undertake. Okay, now I'll go to page two. This is the proposed condition, as was described at the introduction. It's 126 units in total, of which 31 are affordable, not 37, but 31. And those 31 affordable units amount to just in excess of 24 percent of the entire project. This is in accordance with the inclusionary overlay zone ordinance that was adopted by the township in 2017 regarding these three parcels of land. And the project has been designed in strict conformance with those standards. That is, we have commercial uses both to the north and west of the property, but we have existing residences to the east and south of the property. And as part of that 2017 ordinance, there was a requirement that a 20-foot buffer be provided with substantial evergreen plantings along those immediate residential neighbors, and the application includes that required buffer. With regards to access to Amwell Road, I've already described the one driveway directly opposite the existing driveway to Bridgeway. That would be an unrestricted access to the site, both right turn in, right turn out, and left turn in and left turn out. And the dedicated left turn would facilitate the left turn in. As was described, we're seeking a variance for a second driveway access to the property, and that would be a westerly driveway that would be a right turn in, right turn out only driveway. Part of the proposal for this second driveway is to facilitate what we feel is better circulation opportunities for the project. Basically, it's a, I'll say, a U-shaped circular fashion driveway through the site to facilitate access to the apartment buildings, which have garage parking and a driveway behind the garage. And also, we felt it was good planning. We discussed the conceptual layout earlier on with Chris Winterger, the township's fire official, and with regards to emergency access, while, you know, one driveway is permitted and could be proposed and supported by the RSIS standards, we felt that a second driveway would also provide for better planning for emergency access as well. And then finally, with regards to schoolchildren pickup and drop-off, we felt that the two driveways would provide an opportunity for flexibility of circulation through the community. There's a driveway connecting the two access driveways directly behind the first building closest to Amwell Road. And with the two driveways, you know, access along our Amwell Road frontage, we have that opportunity for, I'll say, quick entrance and exit of school bus vehicles rather than having to circulate through the entire project and then back out a single access driveway. So that's one of the relief standards that we're requesting. The second one is with regards to this parking immediately off of the westerly driveway. This first building, what we call Building Number One, will include the community's recreational facility as well as a fitness center, and we've provided a nice parking area immediately adjacent to that. And strict conformance with the ordinance would require a 30-foot setback for this parking area, which is immediately along that westerly property line adjacent to the Autozone facility. We're seeking relief for that 30-foot buffer, but should the board feel otherwise, and we could provide substantial buffering in this area to screen that parking, but we're have a parking in excess of the minimum required, so if the board felt strongly about providing that 30-foot buffer, we could lose, you know, reduce the number of parking spaces in this area. But we felt that the proposal of, you know, while not complying with the buffer, providing additional parking in this area to service that recreation facility in the community recreation area, that's also the rental office, was a positive proposal. And again, our immediate neighbor is a commercial use. With regards to public utilities, there's existing sanitary and water within Amwell Road. We will be connecting to the existing public water in Amwell Road. We've made communication with New Jersey American Water. We've discussed the service. Their preference and direction to the applicant is to provide a single service to the existing main in Amwell Road, which would immediately, once on our site, enter a valve pit and meter chamber, and then a backflow preventer hot box. And then, once on-site, the on-site water main would be owned and operated by the applicant. The one point of metering for New Jersey American would be a single bill to the operator of the apartment complex, and then the operator of the apartment complex in turn would have individual unit meters for water billing of the residence. With regards to public sewer, as I discussed or described, there is existing sanitary sewer in Amwell Road, however, it's shallow, and since the property essentially drains from Amwell Road in a westerly direction all the way to the rear of the property, the opportunity to provide a gravity sewer connection to the existing sewer in Amwell Road is not viable. So after discussions with the HTMUA, that is, the Hillsborough Municipal Utilities Authority, the proposal at this juncture would be to connect to the existing public sewer in Stymet's Road. So there would be that one utility crossing of the wetlands along our easterly boundary, and that is immediately adjacent to that required 20-foot buffer. So there's a small portion of the wetlands that would be disturbed at that location, and then basically restored with natural vegetation, but maintained so that the sewer line itself could be maintained. Stormwater management. This is another utility where the site drains from Amwell Road to the rear toward Stymet's and the southerly tract boundary. We're proposing a stormwater management basin at the rear of the site, and that would be beyond those critical areas, that is, the riparian zone. There's a small portion of wetland transition area that would be impacted by the configuration of the detention basin, and as part of the buffer averaging, we would be mitigating one-to-one for that intrusion into the wetland boundary. So at the end of the day, the total existing and proposed wetland transition area would be the same as the existing condition, if not better, with the compensation area for the transition area. The detention basin itself is an infiltration basin. As you know, now with the new stormwater management regulations, we're required to not only provide for quantity reductions, that is, the existing condition runoff from the site needs to be reduced in peak quantity for the two, 10, and 100-year storm, the two-year storm at 50 percent of the total discharge. So that would be an improvement as a result of the proposed stormwater management system over what is the existing condition. And then for the 50-year storm, it's a 75 percent of the existing condition, and for the 100-year storm, our discharge is 80 percent, that of the existing condition. In addition to quantity, we're required to provide for recharge, that is, promotion of groundwater recharge, as well as quality. That is, the quality of the runoff from the paved areas and treat it with a minimum of 80 percent total suspended solid reduction. We've already made application and received review memorandum from the Delaware Raritan Canal Commission. Part of their review focuses on stormwater management, and I'll report to the board that on January 4th of this year, we received a memorandum from the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission indicating that our stormwater management facilities comply with the New Jersey State Stormwater Management Regulations, NJAC 7, semicolon, 8, and that is with regards to quantity, quality, and recharge. And their only condition or request from the DNR Canal Commission was a conservation and maintenance agreement with regards to the critical areas and the stormwater management facility, and the applicant would certainly comply with that request. And as you know, the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission will not take final action on any application until they receive copies of both the county and the township approvals. Pedestrian access. Part and parcel to the 2017 ordinance were strict requirements with regards to providing for pedestrian access. There's sidewalks throughout the community, as well as sidewalk connections to Amwell Road, and at this location, there's no existing sidewalk along the frontage of the property. As part of the application, that sidewalk would be installed, as well as a missing link of sidewalk across the frontage of the Autozone property. And then from the Autozone property to the west, there is an existing sidewalk that would connect pedestrians all the way to 206, Nelson's Corner Shopping Center, and sidewalks beyond that. Trash enclosures. A unique aspect of this proposal is that the applicant owns and operates numerous other apartment complexes and is found with other projects that, rather than multiple smaller independent trash enclosures, it's more efficient and cleaner to provide a central location where a trash compactor is provided. That is, a dumpster for both recycling and normal trash. The trash portion of that would be in a metal container, a compactor similar to what you might see at, for example, an institution like the high school with a chute where trash is placed into the compactor, and then periodically, there's actually an electric connection that would provide for a compaction of that trash into about a 35 cubic yard container. It's on all four sides, so it's not open to the, at the top. It would be enclosed within a masonry structure, and then immediately adjacent to the trash compactor would be a similar style compactor for recycling. It was a suggestion, and right now, we show that compactor at the end of this parking aisle along our easterly boundary. As part of the review comments, we've received to date a suggestion to consider an alternate location. location. The applicant felt this was the most opportune application, but after consideration of that suggestion, we would propose to relocate that trash compactor to the end of this other access driveway within the community. That would be more than 150 feet from any property line, and beyond that area, that would be part of a conservation easement for the riparian zone, and would be immediately adjacent to about nine parking spaces as opposed to two parking spaces where the current compactor location is, and we felt that that would facilitate not only people walking their trash to this location, but in other communities operated by the applicant, they've seen that people use small cans to wheel their trash over, or just simply put it in the trunk of their car and drive it over to that compactor location. And what I'd like to do maybe now is flip to screen three, which shows that proposed change. And you can see the compactor has been removed from the access driveway that dead ends near the easterly boundary, and is shown at the end of that other location. What I'd like to also highlight for the board as well, and I'd like to flip back to exhibit two, we've also shown in this area a stormwater discharge pipe from the detention basin that is within the riparian zone. After further detailed discussions and correspondence with DP, a reevaluation of that design included a removal of that discharge and pulling it back, and I'll go back to exhibit page three. The discharge would be immediately adjacent to that trash enclosure and within, you know, discharging directly into an existing swale in this area, which is in that riparian zone, and you see it highlighted dark green now, so those woods would be maintained and no longer disturbed, even with the minimal disturbance that would be associated with a single discharge line from a detention basin. And then additionally, when I flip back and forth between the two pages, you'll see there's an existing maintained lawn area that's within that transition area now, that's immediately to the south of our proposed detention basin location, and again, as part of some of the review comments we've received, and further consideration of the township's tree preservation and tree mitigation ordinance, what we would propose is to revegetate that area, excuse my language, with about 56 additional trees in that area. That would help to jumpstart that area to return from its existing manicured, maintained lawn condition to a wooded area, and help to not only, you know, well beyond just the 20-foot minimum buffer for residents, but help to buffer that area from our nearest residents to the south. And this was also a suggestion by the Environmental Commission, both, I think, during our March 25th visit to the Environmental Commission, as well as, I think it was in April, April 2nd site visit, we made a visit with a couple of the Environmental Commission members in early April, and as part of that site walk, we specifically looked at this area, and there was a suggestion to add trees in that area to help jumpstart the reforestation of that area to be placed in a conservation easement, and the applicant would comply with that suggestion. Other relief, these are minor relief elements with regards to parking. The residential site improvement standards require 9-by-18 parking spaces with a 24-foot access aisle, and that's actually in the 2017 ordinance for the overlay zone that was adopted by the township, but as you know, the township also has another section in the ordinance which requires 10-by-20 spaces and a 30-foot access aisle. We would request that the board grant a waiver for that larger parking and allow for strict compliance with the residential site improvement standards.
Excuse me, may I just interrupt you? What do you need a waiver from? You mean RSIS standards, correct?
No, we comply with the RSIS standards.
Correct, and they prevail over the local regulations.
That's correct.
So you don't need a waiver?
Well, Mr. Euro's report.
Okay.
Identified it as a waiver, Dave, sorry. And I agree, at the abundance of caution, we're pointing out, this is one of the review comments we've received. Schoolchildren. We did meet with the transportation coordinator for the Hillsborough Public Schools. There was a suggestion that perhaps schoolchildren would be picked up on Amwell Road. After recent comments we've received on other projects from the board, as well as historic, we revisited that issue with the coordinator, and we believe that they would comply with a board suggestion to have the bus pick up and drop off onsite, and we feel we already have in the design already an appropriate location for that pickup and drop off of schoolchildren. There's a large walkway and sidewalk immediately in front of the Recreation Community Building, and that's rated immediately adjacent to our westerly driveway. Again, we would comply with any suggestion this board may have with regards to other locations or specifics regarding that issue.
Sorry, Mr. Ford, did you say the Board of Education signed off on that?
They suggested the Amwell Road.
Right.
And that was April 4th or 3rd. We were here on another application last Thursday and heard abundantly clear that the board didn't like the idea of having a pickup on Amwell Road or any, so we've already made communication back to them, and we have a meeting scheduled in April to talk about the specific location onsite. So the board would, the public school would acquiesce to a suggestion of an onsite pickup and drop off. That's our understanding, correct?
For purposes of the record, Mr. Ford, the board you alluded to in your comments about last Thursday night, was this board, the planning board?
Correct.
And not the Board of Education?
Correct. Right. Our communication with the public school has been specifically with the transportation supervisor, Lisa Bennett. Perhaps I can go to trees next. We met with the Environmental Commission on March 25th. We had some lengthy discussion about tree mitigation. What I'll report to the board is that while the initial dismissal of this application included a suggestion that the applicant would seek an economic hardship waiver in accordance with the township's stream, or I'm sorry, tree preservation ordinance, we are not going to pursue that economic tree hardship waiver. We will be providing for the trees as required in the calculations of the tree mitigation ordinance. I can report specific numbers and just exactly how we would endeavor to comply with those tree mitigation plantings. Right now, and there's going to be adjustments because we've already reduced our tree impacts, and the final plans may even include, you know, additional reductions in the tree impacts, but right now, we calculate the numbers would be a tree mitigation requirement of 525 trees. Right now, on the plan, we show a proposal of 172 trees with exhibit three with the additional trees, and not including the street trees, we come to a total of 205, I'm sorry, of 56 additional trees, which brings the total trees onsite to 261. So subtracting 261 from the 525 required tree mitigation plantings, that leaves us with 264, and what we would propose, and I'll go to the next exhibit, is to provide those 264 plantings at other sites controlled and operated by the applicant. There are three, actually four in total, and these are exhibits on page four, five, and six. One is Beekman Gardens. That's just, and that's the exhibit I have on the illustration now, and you can see yellow dots on that plan, and for example, I'll highlight the entrance to Beekman Gardens off of New Amwell Road, and you can see on either side of that access driveway, larger green areas where there's good opportunities for enhanced plantings, and then throughout the community, we would propose plantings in total of about 120, I'm sorry, 153 trees. Then the next exhibit is a property at the intersection of Autton Road and Triangle Road. It's New Center Village Square, which is where CVS is located, and then there's an apartment complex on the east side of Autton Road known as New Center Greens, and that's an apartment complex. Both of those facilities are controlled and operated by the applicant, and we would provide 81 additional plantings at that location. And then the final exhibit I'm going to is known as Hillsborough Gardens, the main access, and this is just to the east of the Hillsborough Middle School. It's off of Farm Road with access off of Triangle Road, and at that location, we would propose 30 additional plantings, and that brings us to the total 264, what I'm going to say are alternate sites, not on the specific project site, but alternate sites of the applicant. And what I'd like to just highlight with regards to the Hillsborough Gardens site, the exhibit I have on the screen at this moment, you'll see an absence of plantings within a green swath that traverses through the site, but what I'd like to point out is that is an existing overhead power line through that location, so while we would, you know, like to plant trees, PSENG would not allow it. Then I'll go, go to the next exhibit. This is page seven.
Can I interrupt for a second? So what, I mean, that sounds like a good idea, but, Dave, is that something that, I mean, I haven't heard us do that before? I mean, no, we talked about it in the master plan, you know, kind of revising the tree ordinance.
You mean to plant them on an alternate site?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good point. I think if the board should choose to accept that alternative, that it'd be considered a waiver. Right now, the ordinance provides basically two options, a cash contribution or donating the trees to the Parks Department. So the board thinks this is a viable alternative, that you might consider it as a waiver, just to sort of...
I mean, yeah, it's something new. It seems like, which is a good idea, but, you know...
And what we would do is, the details of specifically what plantings go where, we would provide details to the board's professional satisfaction, and then with regards to the timing of the off-site plantings, we would propose that all of those 264 off-site plantings, if you will, would be in place at those other locations prior to the 50% CO issuance for the project. So they would be, I'll say, done in a more timely, faster fashion than otherwise might have happened.
Does your client, I'm sorry, is your client responsible for planting those trees?
Yes. He would, he would plant the 264 at all those other locations, correct.
Do you need to get permission from the homeowners associations of those facilities, or are they township approvals? How does that work?
They're privately operated apartment complex. It's not a condominium.
So do you have to get permission from them to plant them? Is my question?
The owner is the controlling entity.
Of all of the ones that you're proposing?
Correct.
Okay, understood.
And we can provide whatever documentation...
So he just has to say yes to himself, is the...